Rosio, roll call please.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Chairman Hewer?
Here.
Commissioner Stays?
Here.
And Commissioner Putnam?
Yes.
Captain, today we have Vice Chairman Glass.
Just as a reminder, please make sure everybody speaks clearly into their microphone.
Thank you. Okay, we'll start with the consent calendar in minutes. And for the, everybody's had a chance to review, does anybody want to make a motion to approve the minutes of October 20th, 2021?
I'll make the amendment to approve the minutes of October 20th, 21.
I'll second.
Moved in second? Any discussion? Call for a vote?
Commissioner Kennedy?
I will abstain, I was not here.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Hewer?
Yes.
Commissioner Stays?
Yes.
And Commissioner Putnam?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you.
An approval of resolutions 21, 32, and 21, 33. Everybody's had a chance to review, would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the two resolutions in front of us.
Second?
I'll second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Seeing none, Rosio, if you could please call for a vote, thank you.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Aye.
Commissioner, this is Isaac. Can you hear me?
Yes.
We could, we can't.
We can hear you, Isaac.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Hewer?
Yes.
Commissioner Stays?
Yes.
And Commissioner Putnam?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you.
For general business, item number one, with staff report, please.
Yes, so good evening, Commissioners. Item number one under general business is a public hearing to consider an application for a conditional use permit for by site plan and height variance to construct a cafe on the existing field dock located at 2 Casino Way. The project is in the coastal zone and subject to a coastal development permit by the California Coastal Commission. The owner of the property is actually the City of Avalon, the applicant is Tressel Companies on behalf of Deion and Sons, and I have both the representative from Deion and Sons as well as a representative from Tressel Companies here as well who can answer any additional questions following the conclusion of the staff report. So just some quick background, on September 15th of 2020, City Council had authorized the city manager to issue a request for proposals for qualified businesses to contract out and operate the Avalon Field Dock facility. The RFP was released on November 3rd of that year, and after the RFP concluded, City Council authorized the city manager to execute an agreement with Deion and Sons for the operation of the Avalon Field Dock facility, including the construction and operation of restaurant. This Avalon Field Dock property actually goes back quite a number of years and originally consisted of the replacement of the existing field dock and building structure which was going to be rebuilt to a new cafe. The project went through initial approvals, including a CEQA mitigated NECD or MND at a planning commission meeting held originally on April 29th of 2009, and again on November 19th, 2014. The permits were issued for the field dock replacement, however, the cafe was parsed out as a separate phase to be constructed at a later date once a partner came on board. Part of that was some financial constraints that prohibited the construction of that as they had some unanticipated costs in the original plan and proposal. On November 19th, 2014, the planning commission approved an addendum to that CEQA MND and a site plan application to replace the pier and piling with timber instead of concrete and construct the building with timber frame and stucco due to some of those cost constraints that I previously mentioned. In addition to, so the planning commission granted approval of that second adden, I mean of that first addendum back in 2014. Again, nothing ended up getting built, however, the project itself had moved forward through the California Coastal Commission process and a coastal development permit was issued that contained 13 special conditions in addition to the standard conditions, and most of those were related to the pilings, not to the cafe itself. So there was a previous permit that was approved to build out this cafe. This project has a small minor deviation from those original plans that were approved by both the planning commission, the city council, and the California Coastal Commission. Those modifications include adding some outside kitchen equipment and a bar counter to approximately 600 square feet of the open cafe, concrete slabbed area, that's on the bottom floor of the deck. Staircase is being proposed on the east side and accessible open lift on the north side of that proposal to accommodate access up to a brand-new rooftop deck, and that rooftop deck was not included on the original approved plans, it's being proposed now. It's in compliance with the original design and with the other applicable codes. There is a small minor modification also, there's going to be an open trellis with a Roman-style cloth covering that would allow some additional shade and protection from the elements while not impeding view shed to that deck cafe. That rooftop deck will have synthetic wooden decking, a small bar counter, and outside equipment. The project conforms to the City of Avalon zoning codes and ordinances with the improved entitlements sought by the application, and it doesn't create any additional living or transient units, so it is also consistent with the city's growth policy as codified in the municipal code. A water allocation was previously granted for the project, and the commissioners should have a verification of that finding that no water, no additional water allocation is needed, and the project is able to move forward, at least in respects to the jurisdictional authority that Southern California Edison has. The project's scope is mentioned as a couple minor modifications to the original plans. As such, the conditional use permit for that restaurant, because so much time has passed, has since expired, and so we're basically coming back before the planning commission to renew that conditional use permit along with the findings that were made in the staff report. The project also includes a height variance, the existing building structure for the public restrooms are approximately 18 feet 8 inches at the top of the parapet. The original approved plans actually allowed up to 21 feet. The shaded trellis is approximately 20 feet 10 inches, so it's below the original approved California Coastal Commission height, but we wanted to get a height variance out there, one to help protect the height of the structure from the maximum permitted height, which is 28 feet from the mean height tideline. The Avalon Municipal Code does permit the planning commission to grant variances with such conditions as are deemed necessary to protect public health, safety, and general welfare. Variances from those terms of the zoning ordinances may be granted when the zoning ordinance denies the property's unique character, including the size, shape, topography, location, or surroundings, deprived of privileges enjoyed by other properties in the vicinity and under identical zoning classification. This height variance is being requested to overcome the unique hardship of developing on a lot on the existing Avalon Field Dock, which requires continued city access, specifically that originally approved site plan had the open cafe area covering the entire deck, however, that design would have prohibited city staff from accessing the existing crane that's right there on the northeast side of that deck, and so they reduced the original footprint and then wanted to accommodate some additional seating up at the top, so that was the request. As mentioned, you know, the project was originally approved by the planning commission with a negative declaration adopted in April 29th of 2009 at a duly public notice meeting. An addendum was approved, and this is the second addendum, and the second addendum was requested because of those minor modifications, and time had, there's been a lot of time between when the project was first approved and when the project is now before you for reconsideration, and so we wanted to make sure that we took into consideration some of the new updated codes that CEQA has since addressed, things like some of the greenhouse gas emissions and air quality, and so those were prepared by an outside consultant who found that there was nothing substantial in that, and so that was included as a potential second addendum. So the recommendation today is one of four, one is to approve the site plan as proposed with the standard list of conditions, adopt the findings to support the approval of the conditional use permit, adopt the findings to support the approval of the height variance, and approve the second addendum to the adopted negative declaration for the Casino Field Dock replacement project. So with that, like I said, available for any questions, I also have representatives here from the Deion and Sons, the operator, as well as Tressel, who is helping to guide them through the process and is working closely on the architectural design on that.
Thank you. Any questions for staff before we open the public hearing? Okay, open the hearing. Hearing's open, anybody wishing to testify or provide information for or against?
I do have one comment that's come through, I don't see anybody here in the audience wishing to speak, but I do have one person online. This comes from Jason Chong, he writes, hello, I'm Jason Chong, and I recently took over the position of Vice President of Design and Development of the Catalina Island Company. As we all know, the casino building has been and continues to be an iconic feature of the island since it was constructed back in 1929. The island company is with various stakeholders, are sensitive to any developments in the immediate surrounding area of the casino building that may clash or take away from its grand stature. We have been collaborating with both Deion and Sons and Tressel Companies as they continue with finalizing the design of the Field Dock Cafe. Well, I want to state for the public record that the architectural plans being presented to the planning commission are not 100% final, and that there are a few remaining elements such as finishes, materials, shape, and color that are being worked on with our input so that these plans will ultimately be submitted to Building Safety for Permit after this planning commission approval.
Thank you. Going once, going twice, I see no one coming to the podium, we'll close the public hearing. Okay, would anybody like to make a motion, and then if it gets seconded, we can discuss it, or any general thoughts before a motion is made?
Question for staff. You made reference to a letter from Edison, I didn't see it in my packet.
I'll give you a copy right here.
If you have it in your hand, I'm good. My only concern was it had been so long since this thing, you know, commenced that I was afraid that Edison was going to play, you know, use it or lose it type of game, as long as there's a water allocation, I'm stoked. So on that, thank you very much, Deion and Sons, for stepping up to the plate and putting a restaurant back in there that has been so needed for some time, so kudos. I recognize you spending a whole ton of dough, and with that, I will make a motion to approve this concept per staff recommendations, A through Z.
Excellent. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Seeing none, Rosio, please call for a vote.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Build it.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Hewer?
Yes.
Commissioner Stays?
Yes.
And Commissioner Putnam?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you.
So the second item in your packet tonight is an application for a site plan to remodel a three-story residential property. This property is located at 212 Clarissa Avenue. The first floor will not include any additional square footage as the proposal is to only move interior walls. The proposed addition to the remaining floors total 650 square feet. The second story proposes to add 170 square feet of living space and an additional 180 square feet for the deck. Both of these proposed modifications are within the existing footprint. The third floor is proposing to add a bathroom, 190 square feet of living space, and a 110 square foot deck within the existing footprint. This project is in the coastal zone, however, staff's recommendation is that the planning commission find the project exempt from the requirements of a coastal development permit. The project was noticed at a public hearing which would be required for a CDP, and the planning commission will determine whether that project's within the appealable area boundary. The owner of this property is Patty Waters, and the applicant is straight-up builders. This project is located in the high-density residential zone. The project is categorically exempt under Section 15301 for existing facilities, and staff is finding that 15301D and E1 are applicable in this case. 15301D is the restoration or rehabilitation of deteriorated or damaged structures, facilities, or mechanical equipment to meet current standards of public health, and 15301E1 is that any additions to the existing structures provided that the addition will not result in an increase of more than 50% of the floor area of the structure before the addition or 2,500 square feet, whichever is less. Both those findings hold true in this case. As mentioned, this project is in the coastal zone but is determined to be excluded from the coastal development requirements as established in Division 20, Section 3610 of the Public Resources Code, and Section 9-8102B1 of the Avalon Municipal Code. This essentially just exempts the improvements to existing single-family residents except in classes of development which involve one of two things, one of them is a risk of adverse environmental effect, and improvements to existing single-family residences which involve significant adverse effect as further defined in there. The, as mentioned, in terms of the site plan, the property is located in the high-density residential zone and currently exists as a three-story single-family dwelling. Essentially what they're doing is they're adding 290 square feet total to the third floor, I'm sorry, to the exterior renovations, that'll be 180 square feet of new decking, and to the second floor and 110 square feet decking to the third floor. There's the interior renovations, which are minor at best, most of them involve rearranging interior walls on the first floor, adding 170 square feet of additional living space to the second, and adding some living space, expanding that out, and adding a bathroom to the third floor for a total of 360 square feet. The project does conform to all zoning codes and ordinances and doesn't create any additional living units or transient units, and also complies with the city's growth policy as codified in the municipal code. We have received confirmation that a water allocation is not applicable and not needed in this. There are some additional findings for the site plan that are in your staff report, and so staff is recommending that the planning commission make three findings. The first one is to find the project categorically exempt under CEQA Section 15301D and E1, approve the site plan as proposed with the standard list of conditions, this is found in Exhibit A, and find that the project does not require a coastal development permit pursuant to the municipal code Section 9-8102B1.
Thank you. Any questions for staff before we open the public hearing on item number two? Open the hearing? Anybody would like to say something for or against, or in general about this project out in the audience? Mike, is there any written?
I have no written and nobody here present either.
Well, I see, yeah, Chris, Chris Arnold's here for this. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Any general comments or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
With conditions one, two, and three?
One, two, and three.
I will second.
Moved in second, any discussion on the moved and seconded motion before us? Seeing none, Rosio, if you could count the votes, please.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Hewer?
Yes.
Commissioner Stays?
Yes.
And Commissioner Putnam?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you.
Thanks, Chris, for coming. So items of discussion, planning director, city attorney reports, if any?
I've got one more item actually on agenda, and that is the...
Oh, item number three, I'm sorry.
Yeah, number three. In future meetings, this will likely be placed on consent calendar for this one, it was not, this is the first one that we're actually finding. This is a staff report for findings to continue to hold remote teleconference virtual planning commission meetings pursuant to Assembly Bill 361. Isaac, did you want to talk through anything, or would you like me to continue on?
Can you hear me, Mike?
I can.
Okay. Good evening to the commission, I don't think there's much to report, we've gone over AB 361 before, it's an optional ability for the planning commission to extend the teleconferencing rules that were adopted recently by state law, that's sort of an interim between the old teleconference rules where commissioners would need to physically post their location and make it available to the public if they were going to, if they were going to appear via teleconference, and this is between the executive order that was rescinded for COVID reasons and some new standards that apply. So the planning commission just needs to make the findings within the report that there remains an ongoing state of emergency and public health recommendations to social distance, and the planning commission then can continue to hold hybrid meetings, which means if for some reason for health and safety purposes the commission or members of staff were to appear via teleconference, they wouldn't have to do some of the more onerous teleconference requirements that were previously in effect under the Brown Act.
Thank you. Does this require a hearing or just findings? Do we, it doesn't say...
It does not require a public hearing.
Okay, thank you. So do we have a motion to make the findings necessary to continue as we've been operating under COVID-19?
I'll make a motion that we approve the findings to continue to hold remote teleconference meetings.
Wonderful, thank you. Moved in seconded, any discussion? Rosio, if you could count the votes, please.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Hewer?
Yes.
Commissioner Stays?
Yes.
And Commissioner Putnam?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you.
Okay, now, items of discussion.
I just have a couple quick updates, last Saturday, I'm sorry, not last Saturday, two Saturdays ago, we held a community meeting to go over the city's efforts in updating its housing element. We got some really great community feedback, we'll be making a presentation at a future date to the planning commission to go over what that proposed update is going to be, and give the planning commission, there's an opportunity to hear about the efforts that are underway to update that and to provide any feedback prior to it going to council for adoption. This is part of the city's obligation under the sixth cycle for the regional needs, Housing Needs Assessment, or RENA. Many cities across the entire state are in similar situations and frantically moving forward with updating their housing element to accommodate their housing need numbers. Ours was originally quite high, the final SCAG-approved allocation for the City of Avalon is approximately 37. We have been working with de novo planning group who has been helping to find ways that the city is going to address that, and this is a policy document, so while we're not required to build housing, we are required to find ways to remove governmental constraints to help facilitate building of residential units. Obviously, we know that, you know, we can do everything in our power possible, but the biggest hang-up to development in our community is going to be water, and we've had multiple conversations with HCD so that they're acutely aware of the unique situation that the City of Avalon is in, and that will be something that's going to be discussed in the housing element, so more to report on that. The second thing that I wanted to do is to introduce and to welcome our brilliant new planner, Susana Gutierrez, today's actually her birthday as well, so she chose to spend her birthday here with the planning commission, so you'll be seeing a lot more of her, she actually authored the second staff report, and she's getting quickly caught up to speed, and we're very, very happy to have her a part of the team, so that's all I've got, and Isaac?
None for me, Mike, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot one more thing, I just wanted to know if the planning commissioners wanted to continue to proceed forward, we do have some items on agenda, our next meeting is tentatively scheduled for December 22nd, but I wanted to know if the commissioners wanted to continue to move forward with that, or if they were looking to either move that up or cancel that altogether.
Thoughts?
Doesn't matter to me, I will be here, but...
Yeah, me too.
I will be here.
Looks like we're a boring bunch, and...
So we're going to have the...
So unless you guys change it because of some, you know...
No, we'll keep it as scheduled, we've got annual growth policy to go over, and we'll have a presentation that day, so more to come.
Wonderful, thank you. Any commissioner business?
Have we made any efforts to get our hands around the fire insurance thing, I know that that came up a couple meetings ago?
So that's the presentation that I was referring to, I've got somebody from Sierra who's going to be speaking on that.
Perfect. Just about the state of the market.
Have we, are we posting the seat that's available? Do you know the status on that?
I didn't hear that last part.
The status on the seat that is available for the commission, replacing MICA?
Oh, yeah, I just got together with Devin, applications are going to go out next week, they're going to, the application period will be open for three to four weeks, and we'll hopefully have more to share, we're looking at a tentative appointment in January.
Thank you.
Okay, you know, are we going to talk about, I don't know if anybody else watched the council meeting last night, but, you know, discussing the cost of the CUPs, and Annie had some questions and what have you, how soon can we take that up?
How soon can we take up what with CUPs?
Well, okay, CUPs are now the, you know, the rental agreements, you know, the cost of them, et cetera, I don't know.
You mean fines, you're talking about fines?
No, no.
You're talking about the application process? Oh, okay.
Yeah, we'll be bringing that back to city council in January.
We will be bringing it back, so that means we're going to discuss it next month, right?
On the minimum number of nights, the recommendation from the planning commission on the minimum number of nights was to not move forward with that.
Okay, no, not that, she was also talking about, I don't know, I guess you'd have to watch it or something, but she was talking also about the cost of it.
Oh, for the annual cost for the transient rental license?
The annual cost and, you know, getting the initial one, you know, $3,000 more or less, and it wasn't a fixed...
Staff is right now working on that, and we will be bringing that to the city council for their consideration on the cost of the...
So it won't come back to us?
If there's any change to the cost of the transient rental license and the renewal fee.
I think she's asking us, going to come back to us?
The fees are set by council, not by planning... The fees are set by council, not by planning commissioners.
The fees are set, but I think she kind of wanted, I wouldn't mind knowing how we get to the $3,000, the initial thing, you know.
So does that even come to us, or is that something that the administration works out and leverages to the council, or do we make it?
Administration would work on that and bring that to council for their consideration. But I can discuss with you what is included in those fees and what the breakdown is as it currently exists now.
Anything else? Any business from the audience? For Jer. Good night, Tony.
Good night, Tony.